Please stand for the pledge.
Oh, really?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Here, Hassler.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Jefferson.
Here.
Alderman Jeffries.
Here.
Alderman Nyman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
All the women members.
Here.
Here, you got a form.
Very good. See for approval of the agenda?
With approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us down to city administrators' report. That's fast.
So you've got my updated report at your seats going over a couple of items. Number seven, we have submitted for our COVID-19 fund reimbursement from the county. I was sold by a reliable source that it's been approved today. We're a little less than $10,000 on what we submitted for, most of it being the lobby area that you walked through coming into the building. And we received our latest sales tax report from June, and the numbers are up over last year's numbers in all of the sales tax lines. So people are buying locally, and that's reflecting well in our sales taxes. We hope that holds up for the next budget year, but we're still going to leave the numbers conservative as to what we have in there now for next year, and then if we need to amend, we'll do that when we get into the 2021 budget year. But at this point, that was good news. Our trend is good, steady, or a little bit higher. So any questions about my report or anything else that's on there?
That's it. You. Takes us to Toby. You're up.
Summer showcase, which is scheduled for this weekend, it's kind of a loose collection of events being organized by different entities, businesses, and organizations in the community. So it's kind of just showcasing all the things that St. Genevieve has to offer, various things that are going on this weekend, and putting them out there in a package. So that list of events is in your packets. It's also on our Facebook page and on our website. There have been some cancellations. The library canceled their movie Under the Stars that was scheduled for Friday, and the luau in Maine that was going to take place on Saturday also has been canceled. And those have been updated on our Facebook and also on our website. Which brings me to the part of here on social media and our website. We've been doing some more social media posts of things going on in the community, and our web developer has also put in a page on our website that allows us to post current events. That just happened last couple days. He's working on a way to get that on our homepage so people can see kind of a late-breaking any updates. That would be helpful when things are canceled or when we have things taking place. Are there any questions on anything?
One of the other things that Toby is working on is that there is funding now from the state for marketing that has to be used by November. We'll be bringing a request to the board at the next meeting on an online marketing plan, and we are work developing with the state contractor. And we're going to just pull money out of the current budget to help pay for that because we have money left over in that budget this year because of not having a director for a number of months. But what we're looking at trying to do is at least get the information out, this is how we're being saved, come visit us, and also to push into this fall to just remind people we're here so that next summer, when we do some more advertising, we've got it in people's minds about St. Genevieve and coming to visit. So that will all be reimbursable money from the state. No match, actually. It's all reimbursable.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Kerry.
As you go on my report, we did some cleanup from the storm damage on Chadwell and Rosier Edition. We got some more cleanup done today. We still got some more to do on Chadwell. Patched asphalt on the Port Roberts, Fourth and Third Streets. Removed a collapsed culvert pipe on North Main. Brush hogged a detention bagson on Progress Parkway. Finished putting the playground together at Pinkley Park and put the timbers around it, all that's left to put pea gravel in. Worked on and serviced the moors. Cleaned storm drains, sprayed weeds. Did sweeping after the storm. Put the handicapped spot in on Robert Street and cleaned up the rock that accumulates on Main and Riverview.
Appreciate the Chadwell lane, where you guys did down there. It was great, and especially today getting that last.
Yep.
Kerry, are you guys back to your usual work schedule?
Yeah.
Everything's going okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Great. And do you have a sweep, a street sweeping schedule?
Nope.
It's as needed?
Yeah.
Where it's needed? Thank you.
Where exactly was that collapsed culvert pipe? Just north of Wiener Street. Apparently, we used to be just a little spot, storm drain on the other side, on the west side of the road, and when that sidewalk went in, it got covered. And so we just removed it because there wasn't nothing there. The playground's not settled yet? We've got to get it, just wait for it to get dry enough to get in there and put the pea gravel in now. All right, but you're not letting anybody get it? Not yet, no.
With that pea gravel, will that need to be like a weed string?
We'll just spray it before we put it down, and then it won't grow up through the 12 inches of rock. Thank you, Eric.
David?
You got my report there. You can see the last half of this commission meeting, we approved six COAs. Next meeting will be Monday, August 17th, so this coming Monday. You have the numbers there on the building department. I do have a viable applicant, so I have an interview tomorrow for building inspector, so we'll see how that turns out. Planning and zoning, there wasn't an August meeting. If we need a September meeting, it'll be September 3rd. The only other thing I want to mention on the report is down at the bottom, for two years now, I've been including that property maintenance focus, and as you can see, we're down to nine properties, and those are all nine that are slowly being worked on, so that's less than 5% of the original amount we started with. So next report, I'll probably focus more on ongoing nuisance and code violations, just to let you know how those are going. So that's about all I got.
Hey, you had issued a demolition permit for a mobile home. Is that confirmed?
No.
Which one?
Right down here, South Gavri, on the left.
Okay.
It's actually off its wheels and on a block foundation, but she is planning to demolish it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just comment that one property is, they get it cut. That was so thick that...
It was. The grass is cut now, but we need to follow up on the vegetation. Yeah, and I'll do that.
Thank you.
Pete?
Good evening, everybody. You should have my report in front of you. Don't have a lot to report on. July was a busy month for us. We had 33 calls, which is way above our average. It's hard to believe that in April, we only had four, and then we jumped all the 33 in We are having more personnel stuff, like I put in the report. We lost another two guys, one guy, his wife, and daughter's been living in St. Charles County, and he's been keeping a house, so he's moving up there with them. That's understandable. The other one was a veteran that has some other issues going on, and he didn't realize the time commitment because it is a big time commitment, and he just has to be released. We tried to put him on leave of absence, and he said it'd be best just to separate right now. So we left the door open, and if it gets everything worked out, he can come back. And the lights that we ordered, most of them are in, and we're starting to make arrangements to start the install on them now, too, so. Any questions?
How many of the 33 were mutilated or whatever?
Actually, none were mutilated this time around.
They were all?
We had a few big days, like the storm day. I think we had six or seven calls that day.
All right.
So that bumped it up quite a bit, but those are all within our coverage area.
Kenny, with being down five on the roster, I mean, how much lower do we go before we're putting citizens in danger?
With the mutual aid system, the way it's set up, we have extra departments coming in to help us. I don't know that there's actually a true danger level. It's not good anytime you're with a volunteer staff and you're down that low. We do have three applications that I ran through the background check the other day. I'm getting ready to sit down and talk to them, so hopefully those three will work out and will bring us back up a little bit. We're working hard on recruiting. We want to thank the Herald for running the paper as like they do for us all the time. If you notice our Facebook page, we're always doing something on there, trying to get interest. Ideally, I'd like to be at least three-quarters staff, but we're being volunteer. You can only do what you can do. People have jobs, they have to take care of their families, so we make the best that we can with what we have, and that's why we've worked so hard with mutual aid with other departments to make sure that we have coverage.
Three-quarters staff means having five more.
Would be, it would be good. Ideally, I'd like to have at least 25 of the 29 staff at all time, but people come and go, it's just the nature of the business. Unless you start paying people, it's just getting what you can get from the people that volunteer. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any committee reports? Ashley?
So, been pretty busy with the park board lately. We had a regular meeting on the 28th of July. I've mentioned last time that we had the professional disc golf tournament coming to town on the 23rd of August, so the disc golf club's out there doing some maintenance in the water barriers and for walkability and player safety, and it looks great. We had Sean Long from the library come to us and ask about potential events being posted in the parks at the storytime and movies in the park, and the board is receptive and approved that for future. So we just serve as another venue for the library for the invitations. That was most of what came out of that meeting. And then on August 3rd, we held a special meeting for strategic planning for Pierre Marquette's master planning. The plan at that point was 75% complete. The board approved the rough draft that was presented, and so Dante's Park Planning is working on a final draft now. We hope to have that toward the end of August, beginning of September. And then from there, we'll be able to move on to the next steps of phasing it out and what I wanted to prove by the park board and this board. But overall, attendance has been increased at our meetings. We've been packing the house quite a bit. Public participation's up, too. Social media channels seem to be pretty receptive and doing a job of increasing community engagement. Still have the same vacancies on the board for the voting member and then potential for two high school members. Those would be non-voting, so if anybody knows anybody interested in the park board. I do have an update that I can send out via email. I do have paper copies if anybody's interested in seeing what changes can be expected in the park plan. So if anybody wants a paper copy, I have that. If you just want me to email that, I'll send it out after the meeting. Just give you guys a heads up of what to expect when the final plan comes in.
I'd appreciate an email, if you don't mind. Thank you.
That'd be great, please. And great job. You're doing great things with that park department.
Where would they have the movie?
Likely on the soccer field. It's a big open space. The library actually purchased, they're not able to have a lot of their standard events because of the indoors and COVID, so they purchased a large projector screen, and they already have an account to do licensing for the movies. As Toby had mentioned earlier, they were planning to have a movie out at the community center, between the community center building and Challenger Ball Field, but they canceled it, so we would just serve as another venue so that you can kind of move out of town and engage.
I'm glad you guys are addressing the licensing issue because we ran into that issue with the high school with music and movies, so good job.
Thank you.
Other reports? Very good. Thanks to the public comments, so the floor's open.
Thank you. My name is Herb Fowler, and I'm one of the developers for, along with Greg and Jim Ferguson, and was talking about that RV park situation. And we had, I think most of you know, we had an informational meeting last evening and had some good participation. And after that, as of this morning, the, we owners got together and decided what we was going to do and how to do it and such as that. So as of that meeting, we came up with this, and so I'm going to basically read this report because this is what we decided on as owners, and I don't want to get off track and give my views instead of what all of them. So like I said, I'm going to basically read this, and then we do one if there's questions or whatever, however you want to handle it. But anyway, from the beginning of this project, our primary object, our objective was to develop something that would allow more visitors to come and visit our great town. We understand that there has been a lot of public feedback since the idea was made public a few weeks ago. Some has been negative and some has been very positive. We understand that all of you, the mayor, the city manager, community development administrator, Mr. Bova, and of course, you, the aldermen and alderwomen, have received, you have received a lot of feedback from various people on the topic. Again, some positive and some negative. We were told at a petition that circulated to downtown merchants received approximately 36, I'm sorry, I didn't turn that on. Anyway, we were told at a petition that circulated in downtown merchants received approximately 30 signatures, more or less of that, but it was approximately in support of our RV parking spot proposal. However, we also wanted to give the residents and business owners of our community a chance to voice their opinion and ask more questions directly to us, the owners. So we had an open public forum last evening down at the proposed site. Following the event, we did receive some positive support of the project, but most of the people attending, it was approximately 16 or maybe 18, somewhere in there, they had concerns about having RV parking slots in the downtown area. Of course, some people had other colorful names for their RV parking, but nonetheless, I think you get the idea. RV travel is very popular and growing rapidly, and we believe it will continue to do so, especially with the recent events of the COVID-19. The Audubon receives calls and takes and talks to visiting customers that often ask about a place to park RVs in town. So we figured we had some space that could be developed to provide a small amount of RV parking to kind of spark the idea and bring a few more guests to visit our great historic district and buy our gas, groceries, and shop and other stores, giving more city and county taxes. We would never intentionally do something to promote tension and division among our local citizens. I think we all have a vision for our small town. We may not all have the same vision, but either way, it is a vision that promotes our town in a positive way and promotes growth while protecting our historic treasures. Tourism dollars raise revenue. We're sitting on a tourism jewel, and with support of local, state, and now the national level, we think great things are on the horizon for our community. Having said all that, we recognize the respect and concerns of both our residents and business owners in our town. Maybe the best way to proceed with our RV parking proposal is just to slow down a bit, talk through it, and continue to get ideas and feedback from everyone. There is enough division on our nation right now, and we don't think our community needs to add to that. Therefore, our recommendation to the board would be to table the subject and let us continue to seek more feedback and ideas. Maybe there's a better way or even a better project that we can all work together on and decide on a way forward. I want to thank you for your time and effort. We are still excited about moving forward in some capacity with a project that helps develop and promote our wonderful town. May God bless America, our state of Missouri, and our community of St. Genevieve. That's what we, the owners came up with. I don't have much more to add to that. We all talked a long time, but that's the basis of it, and I guess if anybody's got any questions, like I said a while ago, Jim and Greg Ferguson are back here. They were two of the developer owners. So that's it.
Jim, I don't know if Jim or Greg would want to say something.
Just want to add a little bit. I'm Jim Ferguson. I'm one of the owners of the Audubon's Redevelopment LLC here in St. Genevieve. I just want to add a little bit more to what Herb said. There's no reason to belabor it. Our decision is just to table what we've discussed about putting the RV park in. Doesn't mean that it's a dead issue. We just want to regroup and figure out how we're going to move forward if we're going to move forward. But I look at a lot of the businesses in town that barely stay afloat. Mike Fowler, Herb's son, has a show-me shop across the street, and like he made a comment yesterday, that he's never brought home a paycheck. And there's a lot of other businesses in this town that have not brought home a paycheck. All we're trying to do is develop something in St. Genevieve, and I think if you look at what we've done with the Audubons, we didn't put up a shack, we put up a nice, several million dollar project in this community. And some of the comments yesterday, that we know that we get roughly 40,000-plus people into this town, in this community. And if we had 11 spots, that would be 22, maybe more people in this town, that's enough. So do we put a sign up saying 40,000 people is enough for St. Genevieve? We don't want any more? Or do we want to continue to grow St. Genevieve in a way that is a professional run, not a Jellystone Park, but a well-run RV park? As an example, this last weekend or the weekend before, we had a couple that came into the restaurant to eat. They had an RV, had no place to go with it. They parked it up here at City Hall. They walked down, they said, "We can't find a place to park." Go out to Hawn, go out to these other places, go to Cave Winery, and you'll see that they park out at Cave Winery. These are millennials, my, well, I'm not a millennial, but these are young people that are buying these $250,000 motorhomes. They're not buying a $50 pop-up tent. They're spending a lot of money, and they're, the way this COVID virus has struck now, you can see where they've gone out, and they can't make enough of these RVs. People have changed their way of moving around this country. Air travel is, I fly every week, and I'm one of a half a dozen people on a flight. So air travel is just about gone, but you do see these RVs, and you see a lot of these people taking their families out and about. Again, we weren't putting in a Jellystone. We weren't putting anything that was going to be an eyesore. We talked about the package we were putting in, electric that was going to run the generators, water to help support what they need. Whether we do the sewers is another issue, that's something down the road because of cost. We live in St. Gen, in the city. We have businesses around us. We have restaurants, we have shops. This is another business that would be in there. If we elect to live in downtown St. Jen, these are businesses that we have around us. So again, it's another business that would be part of St. Genevieve, and again, it's not going to be a unthought-of event. We're going to, we're going to, we wanted to put this in. So again, we're tabling it. We're going to rethink. We'd still like to have discussion from our neighbors and other people. But I think the thing that bothered me the most yesterday when we had the meeting was the fact that it was called a Jellystone. And to me, that was disgraceful that that person made that comment, and I'll let it go with that. I'm just saying is that we're going to table it for now, and hopefully we can work out something down the road. Again, our intention was not to put something in that was going to be an eyesore to anybody here or disrupt anybody's lives. So again, it's needed in this community. You want to go to Bloomsdale, you want to go to Perryville, but you don't have RV parking? Okay, so anyway, that was what I wanted to say.
Jim, I just want to say, I think this is an incredibly wise move on your behalf and the team, and to anybody who wasn't in attendance last night, I did attend that, these guys are a class act. And not only did they stand in the face of some people that maybe didn't articulate themselves as they should have in that environment, but these guys fought for feedback amongst their neighbors. These guys are team players, and I just wanted to voice that opinion. I appreciate your efforts last night.
I agree with Mike.
Thank you.
From my point of view.
Any other public comments? John? John Stupi?
I think for the greater good of the community, I think...
You've got a public comment, you've got to come and state your name. John, you'll be next.
I have a concern about this, not that I don't want it to go forward, but I live next door to it, and I just put a lot of money into a historical home. I just moved here like in January. I'm a resident, and I'm just worried about the devaluation of our residences here. Okay, it's greater for the businesses, it may help the businesses out, but I don't know about the residents that are putting money in these historical homes and are in between things in the community. So that's my concern with this thing, too. But like I said, I'm not totally against or anything, but if it's going to be done, it's got to be done right. And I don't want something next to me to devalue my property, which I'm trying to, I put $30,000, $40,000 in it already, and it's not all about the money, but I don't want to devalue my property and sell it and lose money either. So I'm all about enhancing the community, but I just hope it's for the greater good of everybody, businesses as well as not, well, I just know, I don't know too many people in here, like maybe you can go home to your homes in the country or wherever you live. I don't think you would do want an RV place next to you. I mean, as long as it's done right, I could live with that, but if it's not going to be done right, there's no rules and regulations, and I got to make phone calls about noise and all this other stuff, you know, so it's got to have, anyway. I think it's a positive thing for the community, but as far as, I just have my concerns as a resident, that's all. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. John?
John Stupi, 900 Market. It kills me to sit here. Moses Austin has an RV park. Does anybody know that? You know, they say there ain't none here in St. Genevieve. We probably got, probably what, 12 spots down there people can rent? So don't tell me you got to go to Bloomsdale or Hawn Park. It's then already there. It's ready to go. So, you know, as you can see, when it comes back up, I got a lot of problems with down there. I mean, I don't know how it's going to work. I own a towing company, and I have a rollback, and it's 96 inches wide. Let's start off with, the fire department moved out of the downtown because they can't make it up the street by Cerrills. I can't make it up the street. I can't make Jefferson. There's a lot of streets I cannot drive unless I scrape cars. So they better think long and hard on that, where these people's going to take them. And, you know, I'm not being rude, but I know with the Jared Affet working there, a lot of... lot of your RV people cannot back. There's a lot of good campers that can back, but there's a lot of them that can't. And when you get one stuck in front of the ORS and they can't back up, you're going to have a major problem. And in Annan School, I think, starts next week, May or doesn't it?
I believe so, yeah.
So are we just going to let Chadwell Lane just grow up? We wasted all that money up there redoing Chadwell Lane, and them trees is growing way out in the road. So we just going to let it grow up and be a one lane? I walk every night and then I, you know, and I'm not, I walk up by St. Jen's School. Them trees ought to be cut down. They're needing and darn need of a trimming. Nobody wants to trim trees. They want to let them grow. But look at that hazard up there. I mean, I was going to go to the school board and kind of mention to them, maybe they ought to trim some of that stuff back because there's going to be some mean wrecks around. And Chadwell Lane is one of them. There's lots of heavy traffic road, and it's just growing up. So it's something to think about. Give it a heavy cutting back. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Boy, we, you know, I spoke with Happy and I spoke with Gary also about the trees around here that are going to be an issue for the buses to get around some of the streets. So anyway, we have been discussing it.
Yeah, it's coming up. We do it right before school starts.
Problem you got is is is, and I concur with John, but you have property owners on Chadwell that won't let you do any work. Now, there is one big huge tree right there that's got a on Chadwell that's got the limb over. I can see where trucks get that. I don't know why that limb we should that should come out of there. And I don't think that should be the city's expense doing that. I I think we need to hold, you know, homeowners reliable for some of their their trees. I know out of courtesy, we do a lot of stuff around here, but that's the only way. We didn't the same thing happen when we started with the holding people accountable for their properties and beautification. And we held them accountable, and guess what? There's a lot of work got done with a with not a lot of grief, and everybody come on board. So it's something we need to address and talk about instead of sending our work crew out to clean up other people's messes. Now, in an emergency, when we hit on Chadwell? Yeah, that it was, we had to get the road open. But there's been a lot of times when when trees go over on a road that the homeowners should be responsible. Just happened on Main Street, a tree on Main Street went across the road. City paid for it. City crew come in and cleaned it, and we had to to get the road open, but it's a big expense.
So these trees that are overhanging roadways and stuff, I mean, is there a legal liability for the city and?
There's ordinance, is it? There's an ordinance is it said that we have to, we can?
Well, if it's in in your easements for the road, why can't we cut it?
We can, yeah. And that's what we're going to do before the school year starts because we're letting it letting it grow as the summer goes on. But our timing is not good this year because of how much growth we've had in all of our trees and plants and everything. Yeah, that has to be done, and the repainting of the lines, crosswalks, also we do that before school starts.
But the trees by school, those are on private property.
And I'm so sure, but if it extends into the right of way, we have the right to cut that.
We have the, yeah, I understand we have the right. We had this discussion pre-COVID, so prior to your arrival, Happy, about whose responsibility and how much. I don't think we ever, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we ever came to any consensus or took any action. But I think I think it would be helpful if we look at the current ordinance and we make a decision on if we want to be reactive or proactive with this.
Well, we had a discussion on Chadwell about, if you remember, about widening and looking at talking to the property owners, and they don't want to do it. They wouldn't give us the ground to do it. So they have trees in that it's not city property, you know? So if we want to do it, you'd have to get permission from the homeowner. And I know one over there don't want it done, won't don't want you touching trees. So.
He has agreed to let us cut up from the blacktop straight up, but that's it.
So.
But there's further areas down there that could be trimmed a lot, and Special Road had agreed to do that.
And well, how come they they got stopped because of the?
Because of the opposition.
From the homeowners?
Right.
Okay, because that's a buffer is what it is. And I understand that, too. So but.
You know, the one area in the curve is the worst area or sight line, but I think that property owner would more than agree to let us do it. We just need to move forward and do it.
Okay. But should we be doing that or should the property owner be doing that?
Well, I mean, this property owner has agreed. I don't think he has the ability, but I think if I think if we went back to Special Road, I think they would agree to do it again.
But part of being a homeowner is keeping up with your your plants, your yard, all that stuff, too. So at some point, we have to figure out what we're going to enforce.
That's not a pleasant thing.
No, no, nobody wants to be the bad guy.
No. Yeah. All righty. We have any more public comments? Miss Miss Rob, you're on.
Sorry, I can't speak with this. My name is Yvonne Lemire. I own the St. Jen Bouvet House, 20 South Main Street, right next to the Show Me Shop. And though I truly believe that, yes, we probably need an extension of something for travelers, an RV park. I think it's a great idea. I just don't think that it belongs in the historic district. We all know what my house is, and the reason that Bill and I did that house was to enhance St. Genevieve because of his love for this town. And I hate to see something like an RV park there when, no matter how careful human beings say they're going to be, we human beings tend to be lazy and we think we're we're beyond following rules. That's why we're wearing these. So though it starts out to be a great idea, somehow things get a little lax. We get a little more lenient. So I'm going to get back on what I think the park should be. For one thing, it should be enhanced. It should be in green spaces. It should have grass. If I were traveling in an RV, I would want to be not on gravel or a piece of or just concrete there and in a tight space. I would want to be out where it's green and lush and trees and shade. So I did some more research, and there are hookups out at Paramarquet Park where it's the roads are already paved, the roads are already decent enough for the RVs to come in and out. It's green, it's lush, it's spacious. Families do the traveling. They do a lot of traveling with children. They want to run around in a park area. It's also close enough to town where they can either walk or we have a person here in town who has that darling little trolley, who could also earn a living from that, shuttling people back and forth. That's one. The other one was the Marina. I know that's going to take more work, but it's in walking distance. Okay, I know there's an issue there. The other is a lot of people travel here. There are buses coming in to use our water park. The closest water park, I believe, is in Grafton, Grafton, Illinois. So this is a huge draw. We have an outstanding community center, not only for children, but for seniors. And like I was told, a lot of seniors drive these RVs. They're the ones that own them, and they're the ones that live in them. Some of them, they travel. Again, we're talking about a spacious, lush, green location. Again, with the gentleman who owns the trolley schlepping people back and forth, I mean, it's just, it's a it's a lovely thing to do for our town and still keep the 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 anemone, the 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 history, the charmingness of St. Genevieve. My belief is we should enhance St. Genevieve and upgrade it, not degrade it. And I have a thousand other ideas. I mean, I even have ideas for the restaurants so that they make more money and do it using only their premises. I mean, let's face it, that's what I've that's what I did for how many years, using their own premises, making it wonderful for people to come. A restaurant, especially one with the historic, the historic history behind it, should be a venue for coming to town. We all know what the Blue Owl is like. Her place is a destination, and that's what we need in this town. And I think that restaurant could be a destination. You just have to change a few things, in my opinion. I probably have a lot more things, but standing up in front of you makes me a little nervous. So it's been a while since I did a whole lot of public speaking. So if does anyone have any questions for me?
I just wanted to let you know that the petition that you went and did and all the work that you did, I gave copies per your request to all the aldermen and women, so they have that as well.
Okay, thank you. And again, I do say, I believe we need a public RV park, but how about something larger to bring in even more people? This is a national park. What do you think the people that the national that come in and they say, this is supposed to be a big deal in here, and we've got an RV right in town? I know that's what people would say to me. So though it was a good idea to start with, I just think that the location is probably not the best location for something that would really benefit this town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name's Guy Utral, living in 399 North Main. I bought a flood buyout house, and I'm held under the, as long as I own the house, entitled the house to follow their rules of because it's historically significant. First thing I'd like to do is commend our police department. I wasn't involved, and I was around a few arrests this week, and three of them. And I just want to tell you, they went out of their way to be nice to these people. And I know that they see these people probably six times a week, and they didn't, they didn't know I was there like they're being good in front of citizens. They were, they were really nice. We had a boy that was nodding out in a car, driving a Cadillac, and, you know, I don't want to say anymore, but they were really good to him. You know, I mean, they didn't, he didn't feel pressured. I just wanted to mention that. Another thing I'd like to bring up is I signed Yvonne's petition against this RV park. My wife signed it, my mom. The reason I signed is because the information, there was none. Okay, when they say we'll address this, we'll address that, no. Before I feel there's a vote, we need to see what they're addressing. Like Yvonne said, none of them live in town. Okay, so who's going to say when the noise gets too loud? Our police department? Well, they've got a lot to do. You know, they're not there to embed her a business, you know, like to watch it. Like they had, they had trouble watching the Johns down there. Police didn't want to maintain them. They didn't want to go in there and check them. I was part of that when I was on this park board. But I signed it because I was against it. But I live in that area, and I know the coffee shop people, and I know the other people, and I know Sam, and I know how four people more a month would help them. Four, you know what I mean? She's got a good coffee business down there. She's a stern lady, so she's not too good with, you know, and I'll say it, she's going to hear me with the public, but her product is excellent. And they're really working hard. We've got a group of people out here that just built that horizontal log cabin, and all they demand is more people. The city's not doing anything to get people. I was a commissioner on landmarks, so I know the do's and don'ts. It's definitely not recommended. I can tell you that, to put an RV park in the city in the heart of our, but I've been here 20 years, and I've seen nothing. You know, we've got the museum now where he promised a lot, you know, he says a lot of people will come. Well, the Kova upset nations, so. But I think if there's a way, we could wiggle it. Now, people's talking about the turns aren't right. They invested millions in this building. You think they're going to not make sure it works? I mean, they're going to get Bowman's down there, and they're going to do everything. But the first step is to is to see if it's feasible before they start paying thousands of dollars for plans and that. I've set up these parks. I did Silver Lake and Perryville. They can be done real neat to where there's no footprint, hardly no footprint. Now, what stops an RV right now from parking there for two days in a parking lot now? What regulations do we have? I just tried to get a car moved in front of a house I'm working on because we couldn't couldn't deliver, and they told me he could sit there for 20 days, just leave his car parked right in the way. But we we got it moved. You know, they were calm, the police worked with the man, and we got it moved. So I think we're going to have RVs sitting there anyway if this gets going, and they're just going to leave it when. They're self-contained, you know what I mean? Some of them got 12-volt systems, so they don't need to run their generators. I, and we say, you know, we're got 40,000 people. Well, I've been looking for 5,000 since I've lived here, and I'm not seeing it. You know what I mean? So I just want to bring bring that up. And another thing I'd like to say is we're getting a lot of these ATV vehicles running around town. If you read right on them, they're not made for street use. They got a sticker right there, right on them, and you have to wear helmets. I see people not wearing helmets. But the one thing that sets me the most is I live where the speed changes, I'd say, from 20 miles an hour to 30. These vehicles are not geared, they're low torque, to run at a certain RPMs. Well, when they're doing 30, you don't really do 30 in the road. So that low gear makes the noise immense. Okay, so we're worried about noise in an RV park when none of them are going to compare to an RV going by my house. You know what I mean? And now we're getting these Harleys in Grafton, Illinois, about 15 of us were going through Grafton, got pulled over. He went around with a decibel thing, and none of us failed because he had us put it on a certain RPMs. Four months later, we went through there again, and they had a law that if if the exhaust system wasn't on the bike, you couldn't go through their town, Grafton, Illinois, if it was an aftermarket exhaust system. Because, you know, you can keep them quiet, but if you want to open them up. I would like, you know, I'll come back. I'd like you to really look into maybe put two of these decibel things in these police cars, give them a little bit of training about RPMs, and then put it up that exhaust, and you'll see that it's wouldn't be permissible. Even St. Mary's was doing it when they had a policeman. They would, they would, they would check it. So, yeah, I just want to say, the police department is was doing excellent when I was around. If there's, I'm going for the park as long as I see what they're doing. Now, these are self-contained, they can fill their tanks up at one hose bib, there's not a lot of hoses. The electric, they can dig a trough. It's no worse than all these poles hanging down on these telephone poles for Jerde Fett. I was there last night, and I think I seen a box with nine plugins on them, which is electrically is wrong because they're 15-amp plugs that are on 20-amp breakers. You just can't do that. But the RV people know not to plug into them. And I'd really like to come back and talk about decibel readings on these ATVs. And I'm seeing them out on the state road, I'm seeing them on 32, and they cost $12,000 to $15,000, they're making display. Thank you.
Anybody else have any public comments?
I'm Bo Halba. I'm a resident down on Main Street, South Main. Family has been involved in town for a number of years. I'm also in the fire department. I did sign the petition, and I do agree with it as much as I love them to death. They're a great family. They've done great things for Autobonds, and all of us should be really thankful for the work that they put into the city. But as far as an RV park goes, I think it's a good idea for the city, but not a good place for it. It's going to bring down home values, I feel. The streets, I don't know if anybody's thought of this, but they're already really narrow down there as it is. It's one of the reasons why the fire department moved its building. We can barely get through in some of the areas. So what are we going to do when we start having RVs coming through there? It's another issue. Having an eyesore like that in the prettiest part of our city, why we have tourism come down here is not really something that I would think would be appealing tourism. So all of these reasons, plus what has already been stated, would be what I agree with. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Me? Oh, you did, yes. Could I say something again?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have to?
I forgot to say that one of the things when, we all know that I went around with a petition because I wanted to find out what the town thought of. I stayed right in the historic district, and in two and a half days, I had 57 people sign it with so many different questions. And I don't really have all the answers because I'm still asking questions as well. They're not happy with it. They don't see any reason to have it in the historic square, though. Everybody, absolutely everybody, thought it was a good idea to have an RV park in St. Genevieve, but not in the historic town, in the outskirts of the town. Genevieve, but not in the historic town, in the outskirts of the town. They, they questioned how they were getting in, they questioned the rules and regulations, they questioned the railroad crossings. Today, somebody asked me, is the railroad going to be responsible for them coming, since they have to come down on First Street? Are they going to be responsible or what are they going to do to protect the railroad crossing, to protect people from it? Do they have to put lights up? Do they have to put warning lights up now? Also, someone else said something about the dump thing, the dump, you know, cleaning out their tanks. And someone told me that they have actually seen RVs come into our town and go down Main Street and go to the river and dump it in the river. So I don't, I mean, like I said, people, human beings are not always as wonderful and decent as we expect them to be and they do things that they think they can get away with. So that's a thought. Dumping it in our sewers as well, because the only one I, dump station I found was Love's on the highway and Sean Park. And Sean Park absolutely forbids anybody to come in and use their, their waste areas. So, I mean, if that, and I know that's an expensive item to put in, it's, it's huge. So I don't know how that would be addressed. I'm sure, again, I'll think of other things as soon as I sit down, but like I said, out of the 57 people that signed, and I had people calling me up today wanting to sign this because they were so opposed to it. These are your people who voted for you and they're down in the historic district and some of them are just a little ways out, who have come into town to rehab historic buildings. So you might want to think about the fact that not everybody is happy campers, even though most of all of you, with the exception of Sue, live kind of out in the county where it's lovely and peaceful and quiet. But in town...
They all live in the city. Everybody, I'm just saying, lives in the city.
In the city?
In the city.
Down here by, I mean, down here in the...
No, there's, there's four districts to the city.
Well, I get...
Carrie and Suzie live in the first district.
I get that, but...
So there's all different, they represent the different, everybody lives in the city. That's an order.
But where this is going to be effective is like the two, three blocks.
Yes, yes.
And so that's, that, those are the people that I, that have asked what's going on and they're not, they're not happy with it, to say the least, which is why they signed the petition. So does anybody have any questions for me?
I just want to dovetail into what you said and commend you and others like Julie and who helped you, people who helped you do this.
Uh huh.
Gone around and helped you do this. I, I want to thank you very much. I know it's difficult and challenging and you put in a lot of work.
It's hot.
I'd like to also just add that in addition to the 57 people that signed this, I had multiple people contact me directly or stop by my house or come in my backyard and catch me in the wares and let me know that they would not sign it, although they are against it because they love the owners of Autobond so much that they just didn't want to be seen as being cruel. So this petition is not even close to the amount of people from Ward One who've contacted me and I'm sure Suzie as well and let her know that they do not want it in our district. It's a great idea, but they really do not want it in the registered historic district at all.
Thank you so much, because that's something I forgot to say. There were a lot of people that called me as well and some people I approached and they said, you know, this is a, they said it was a horrible idea. It's just not acceptable. But because of their love for this family, including myself, I mean, Herb, you dug holes for me for my trees once a long time ago. You've also shoveled my sidewalk, you know? They've been a blessing to me. It's just, I think that something else could be done with this, with this piece of land that they have besides put an RV park in it. And again, my mind is always brimming with ideas. I'm always drawing things up.
And again, I agree with you. The overwhelming response I have is great idea, wrong location.
Right. And they, and they did apologize for me. I can't give you names, but they apologized and said, I would really love to sign it, but I would feel terrible if they found out that I was against it. So yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Any other comments before we close the public comments? That'll close the public comments. Thank you all for your information and your coming. Look at the consent agenda. Call in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Takes us to old business, an ordinance, second reading of an ordinance approving the special use permit for Jane and Dustin Martin that will allow guest lodging at 288 South Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Ickes?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Naas?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4379 now becomes ordinance 4301.
Very good. This is going to be the first reading of bill number 4375 and I'd like for Mark to comment on it.
Yeah, so I had a discussion with the county about this earlier today. Hopefully you can hear me. But then the concern I have from a legal standpoint is that they submitted this application, but if, the project itself would require rezoning a portion of it because some of it's in C1 and really it's a special use application for an I1, which you approved the special use permit process for that. But this project applies to two zoning districts. So I would recommend you deny it, have it reapply when they have the entire project ready to go, along with a request for a zoning change from C1 to Light Industrial, which would allow the special use permit.
Motion to deny and have them reapply?
Let me, let's read it and then...
Oh, okay, sorry.
Can we do that or...
No, you can, you can read it. I, I mean, I'm asking you not to vote to approve it, I'm asking you to, someone at some point in this process to, to move to deny it, put it to, put it to bed and have them reapply. I mean, it wouldn't be that you, you wouldn't be moving for them to reapply, you'd just be denying it as submitted. Not necessarily that you're ever going to deny it or approve it later, but because of the zoning issue, I just don't think it's appropriate to approve it or just table it. I think this one has to be dealt with and they need to come back if they want to do the project related to it. It has to be with a zoning request, zoning change request for whatever portion of that commercial zoned area that they want to have rezoned to Light Industrial, which would allow an RV park with a special use permit.
Bob?
Mark, I've got one question and stuff to make sure I understand this rezoning. So their piece of property has two different zoning in that parking lot.
Exactly. Where the paved parking area is, is the C1 district and then the gravel lot behind it is the I1 district. Yeah. So really what they're going to have to do is, is get a legal description for whether the portion of that C1 they want to have rezoned. Assuming they don't want the whole thing rezoned to Light Industrial, which would create different issues. But if they have a project for that portion of the, the property that includes any part of the C1, they need a rezoning request, not just a special use permit.
And they may decide that it's a better location for it as well. So if we denied it, then they would give them an opportunity to find a better location as well, if they wanted to.
Deny it, it would end this process.
Right, copy that.
They have to start over. What do you think about the merits of this project or not? The technical process has to start over from the beginning with a zoning change request from the C1 to Light Industrial for that portion that they want to use for this project.
Thank you.
With that, I'll read it and then we'll make a motion from there. Ordinance bill number 4375, an ordinance approving a special use permit for James Ferguson, Autobond Development LLC that will allow the operation of an RV park on a portion of the parking lot on 30 North Main Street.
Can I make a motion to deny this request?
Do I have a second? Buck, we have a second? All in favor of denial? Say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any approved? Any disapproved or, sounds like everybody was, it was universal.
I had a recommendation of a little bit.
Okay, very good. Takes us to new business, bill number 4380, an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 115, City Officials, Article 6, City Administrator, Section 115. Dot 210, Powers and Duties in, and Chapter 140. Competitive bidding policy is set forth below. Motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
First reading of bill number 4381, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, amending the City of St. Genevieve Personnel Manual is set forth below. Motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Takes us to bill number 4382, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative agreement with the National Park Service to assist in the establishment of the Park Service in St. Genevieve and to coordinate transfer of the Welcome Center located at 66 South Main Street to the National Park Service. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, have a second reading on this?
Second. Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Second reading of bill number 4382, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative agreement with the National Park Service to assist in the establishment of the Park Service in St. Genevieve and to coordinate the transfer of the Welcome Center located at 66 South Main Street to the National Park Service. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Armbruce, sir, yes. Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Ickes?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4382 now becomes ordinance 4302.
Is there any other business?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. I just wanted to bring up our response to the coronavirus and not, not to mandate anything, but in some of the calls that I received this week, a lot of people had mentioned I would be at the meeting on Thursday, but I can't risk bringing, you know, the exposure and bringing it home to my household. So there are members of our community that feel like they can't participate in our meetings. So I'd like us to think of a way to get them involved, whether it's having a Zoom channel that they, the public can get involved in or Facebook Live with a moderator or something. And I'm not even opposed to if any of the board members felt like they need to stay home, but this, this week alone, we've averaged, you know, had three to five cases a day go up. And it's not the fear monger, but members of our community are starting to, if they haven't already, starting to think about it. And so I just want to, want us to start being proactive to make sure that they can still feel engaged with our meetings.
I concur. I think it's a great idea to offer some other forum in the form of a Zoom or something where they could do virtual and be interactive still if they wanted to be, if that's possible. Otherwise, do we need to, otherwise if we can't do that, should we think about a larger forum is what I'm asking. Just two things.
We can, because we, we're just a large screen TV, we can do Zoom and have audience members sign into that unless you want to also do the same thing with the board. Do you all still want to keep meeting, meeting here?
I personally like to be here, but if any individual member, you know, maybe they have some exposure and it comes to the meeting, I wouldn't mind them having an option to notify you all first or the board and then they sit, they have a Zoom and so...
In concert to that, I also want to commend the likes of Rainey and Suzie and Bob's question at the last meeting, asking if we should start wearing masks. So I want to just commend everybody for actually wearing masks for our first alderman meeting like this. So I think it's a great idea. I fully support it.
And I know there's some, before, there's been some discussion about the, the legal aspect of maybe some folks don't have internet. And so is there, with that aspect, you know, on the bottom of our agendas, as, as any person needing special accommodations, they, they could call 20, you know, whatever it is, 48 hours, 24 hours in advance and if they needed a special accommodation, whether it's, you know, having something outside or having a telephone on where they can listen in or if there's something, we can work with that individual person on their, their need maybe.
So you suggest...
Just so we're clear, I mean, the, the caution I had on that was when you were totally virtual and I was concerned that people could not participate because they may not have that access. But you could absolutely set up a Zoom meeting and then allow people to make public comments at that time, but you're going to want to mute them during the test meeting, you know, just so that you can start a meeting. But there's no legal impediment to what you're proposing, there's no legal impediment to any of the board members either individually or collectively participating via video conferencing. Under the law, you're, you're fully participating in the meeting if you do it by video conference. So then the issue then was we're closing City Hall, we're doing completely virtual and people may not have access. That was the issue. But if you're supplementing, and if we had City Hall open with a screen for people, look at, there was never a problem. You shut everything down, all the contemplating there. So we can certainly have the video conferencing capabilities if that's what we all want to do, there's not a legal problem with any of the suggestions.
Thanks, Mark. In addition to the Zoom, I like the idea though of like when we're, I'm asking corporate, right, Mike and everybody else, we could have a teleconference as well, a telephone on the desk as well, so if those people don't have internet connectivity, they could dial into a number and at least listen to us. Would that be possible as well? Like a desk phone?
More than to wire something in at that point. So there's, there's an expense.
So I'm hearing it's feasible at a, at a, at a cost.
At a cost, yeah.
But with Zoom, you can also call in. You don't have to have the internet access. You can just call.
You don't?
Nope, you can call in, there's a number on every meeting.
Shazam, I didn't know that.[1683.25]